Is making for court right quick?
Change of moving on pretty good. As you see out there, the block where he's got through later, the block and part of the wall put up. Got a little change of plans with found out. The electricians, they were gonna bore underneath the street and go across and put their tie in their lines over there, but it looks like they're not. They're gonna go across the alleyway and just this side of about thirty feet, this side of the water, water hydrant. And water line, that's where they're gonna put the pole in. Supposed to be Brandon Wright today to find out. I think the reason is they can't put it over there is because that's on private, I mean, that's on Ryan Harvick's property. Is where the pole was gonna go. Uh, electrician brought something up to me. When they drill through the wall and run their lines through the wall, then they're gonna run lines in pipe underground so far. And they wanna know if they can encase that in cement. Reason being is just pour cement over the top of it. Reason is if they ever have to, if we ever have to dig or anything else, it won't get right into there. It'll scrape into that concrete. Now, that's not in part of the bid or anything else, that's just an extra thing. But they can, they suggest doing that and then putting like a red dye in the cement. That way, we know what that is. And that's just for electric lines. And there's gonna be four inch pipes coming through there, four inch PVC pipe.
Places for the extra cost to be on.
I'm not sure, I will double check. I just found out today what it's gonna be. And it's about approximately about a hundred and twenty feet of cement from the end of the building here north. So.
That's not a bad idea, actually. I mean, who's gonna get a change order real little thing or anything would do that, but.
Okay. I just, I, I mean, because who knows what other digging we're gonna go on to? And then the other thing is, uh, we need to think about is going ahead here pretty soon and figure out about removing that water line and rerouting the water line. Cause as of right now, it's still underneath that building. It's gonna be going underneath that building. And so we need to, and that's, that's just gonna, they had nothing to do with the change order, that's gonna have to do eventually.
What's a change order limit on this job?
Well, you have a maximum of fifteen percent of the whole bid. And that's all the change orders. I mean, your total change orders can only be fifteen percent of the whole bid.
And you wanna take those two sheds out too, but building may want.
Yes, yes. And that's something I wanna, uh, start looking into too, is just making one building. Because see, the plan showed for us to take out those two buildings. Why I don't know why they show that, to take out the two buildings or remove them.
Gonna have some time.
Yeah, so, because I think the thinking of was maybe that, that storage room can store the, that can house.
Follow steps in there.
The, the stuff that's in there, but there's no way, it won't have it. So if I can remove those two buildings and just make one, one shed, I think it would be more suffice than anything.
Okay, do they, does Nuttville understand that the change orders have to come from warranty?
Right, but that's not part of the change order.
No, any kind of change order, so if you're doing this concrete or anything, that has to come to us in form of the change order from warranty.
Right, and see, that's what they're saying. They said we can do it on our own without putting it into a change order.
Well, how? Cause we always put like the bid.
Who's gonna be paying for it?
I mean, us, of course, us.
No, I mean, this is all one thing, so it's gotta be in the order of a change order. I mean, just because you're gonna do something and it's gonna be outside the bid, that's still in on that project, so it needs to come to a standard order.
I mean, that's monitoring it to the, to the commission.
And I mean, that change order has to come in paper form to us. It has to go through a board meeting to be approved. So it can't be just something that we say, okay, we're gonna do that.
Right, I understand. That's what I wanted to bring to that question, yeah.
They ask to come from warranty or start from.
I would think it needs to come from warranty, cause that's to, is in all of our respects and everything else. I mean, that's kinda why we paid them the big bucks, so.
Other than that, I think everything's going fine. Electrician, what I need to do, I probably need to get with you Chad, cause we're probably gonna have to use that forklift or the backhoe with the forks on it. Cause they're gonna start bringing over the, uh, control panels and the switch gears. They're bringing three of them over today. So probably need to use the forklift, your backhoe with the forks on it to put, take them off the trailer, load them on the trailer, then bring it over here and take them off the trailer. And then I could even, I don't know how they're gonna get them in, but they made a platform downstairs to go in and give out, so. All of that and everything rolling on.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Can you pull the discussion?
Okay. Don't tell us.
Do what?
He didn't tell us, thanks.
Well, what did you do for me? Oh, thank you very much for taking this down.
Doug didn't tell us.
What?
Nothing is going. I've been a smart guy.
Presenting.
I'm a jack.
You got somewhere. Did you have fish or something?
No, we were out.
Nothing.
Working. Is that what you're supposed to do on weekends?
Move the approval.
Second, all favor.
Cutting out brush and taking off stuff when my parents help. I was like, I'll take Friday off and relax, and then they're like, they sad that, changed that plan pretty quick. Both my brothers were over the house.
Dig out stones by hand.
But it was Friday, so it was right after that rain and it's nice and cool out, so.
There must have been big trees.
Not too bad.
Dig away, is the tractor pulling on?
We'd have to have a tractor for that.
There is a new vendor that, um, and I don't know that I even have to ask you guys, but I, that suppose though they can only get the sink combo toilet thing for the bathrooms downstairs. Out of Fort Worth, Texas. Do you want me to just fill out the application form?
Yeah.
Other place around?
Um, I don't know that necessarily. This is all coming from Tony. I haven't checked into it, cause I really don't know what he's wanting, so, um.
Assuming all the stalls were out on this space you say.
Nancy, here's a travel. Do you want to write that on the sticker for you?
There have been places where they just had squat.
Here's a travel, so just put on, do you want me to note it down on the sticker for you, or you want to see it when it comes?
No. No.
Let's note it on sticker.
If you got the sticker, I sure will, but.
Hey, I was gonna ask you when your Cowboys play again. Oh wait, they lost. Was that your Cowboys? Oh wait, they lost too.
You can cheer on OU, they're in both.
They might have, well, you girls might have. Wasted all their shots on this last.
They lose their next one, they play Stanford.
Yeah.
And somehow I got two blankets from your districts in my blanket things, so you may not have them also, so throw it back at me and I'll write them down to you. Or when you get them down, I'll write them down.
Or just give them to me when you're done.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just give them to you.
We enjoyed, we enjoyed your vacation too.
I told the girls to make sure they got in that box and you brought them in, but.
Yeah.
Last week I think they were totally kind of confused about the money. I don't think they realized it.
Yeah.
There's lots of party music though going on in.
Last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was lots of party music going on all last week.
Not yours, there. Already heard all about the trip to London and she stopped in and told us.
Yeah, the whole office left.
The whole office left?
Left.
Left? Good, I'm proud of them. Kathy's brother passed away, so she won't be here until later this week.
Coming off the vacation, she really wanted.
No, that's California, but it's not really a vacation that she was wanting.
Who, who was?
Kathy's brother. Yeah, she's lost her dad, a sister and a brother in the past, probably not quite year and a half.
She went to a show.
Yeah, they went on, I guess all those sisters, they always go together on a vacation. And a year ago, her vacation, I guess that'd be maybe a closer to two years. It was the first vacation that she had when I came in. She went to California and, um, her dad passed away. So that kinda ended that. They had to go do that. And then the next year, all of her sisters got together to go on a vacation again. And one of her sisters fell and was in the hospital the whole entire time. I'm like, I think I quit going on vacation with my sisters. And then after they got back from that vacation, another sister, not the one that fell, another sister passed away. Geez.
Something they're gonna go hard time.
Yeah. Feel a little nephew was being a hand yesterday. He was tired, but he was doing everything he asked me to do. I said, say Kyle Ucky. He went, uh, yeah, I know. That's what he said.
I'm sure he did. All I can about say is ball.
I asked him if he seen the belly, baby elephant. What did the baby elephant say? And he went moo. I went, wow, that's a good one. He said, that's what they said all during the zoo and maybe up there went moo. Twentieth. Monday's the only day I know what day it is. The rest of the week I have no idea. How are you, sir?
Good.
Good.
Not bad, but Monday morning anyways.
I'm sure he was exhausted, cause he played with my two nieces and, well, everybody was together on Friday and so he was playing with the two girls and. And then they went to the zoo on Saturday. I'm sure Sunday he was exhausted.
Yeah, he was tired when I seen him. His little eyes were all red. He never like blows kisses until Dubai, but he was like going, he was wanting to go home. Trent patted his shoulder and he laid his head down and he was sucking, he was tired.
And then, I mean, he's not, he's not really a dog.
I wanted to say that I was trying to be nice.
Just we're all, we're all going on a big old fishing trip in April.
Where you going?
We're going after paddlefish. I don't know who's all going. I know Trent, Brian and I are going. I think Dog's going, I don't know.
We seen a mackerel. This mackerel was like longer than I was tall.
What a fish to be, yeah, totally out of line.
It's a little huge. Didn't they have these other like pink colored fish? I didn't, I asked a little people what they were and nobody ever told me. So I don't know what they were.
Did you go in the last one boat or?
No, we went on a sailboat and that was it. They tried to talk us into going on their boat to go, um, they wanted one of the girls to give them their finger so they could cut their finger and they was gonna drag them behind so we could see sharks. None of them volunteered, so dang it.
You didn't volunteer?
They didn't call the girls to do it, they're not gonna do it. I was too sweet, they wouldn't follow, I guess, so.
Probably all would have loaded upside down.
You're mean, dog.
The only time it was crazy was on St. Patrick's Day. And I thought maybe that that was just how it was gonna be all week long. I'm like, I am ready to go home, there's too many people here. But then Wednesday was like back to Sunday and Monday and there was like nobody there. I think it's like this huge hangout place on St. Patrick's Day, I guess, I don't know.
Wow, people do that. There's just so many, I look at all those pictures, there's nowhere to stand.
Yeah, and that's, that's how the whole place was. I mean, it would normally take us like five minutes to get across Pensacola Beach to go to the restaurants. And that day it took us an hour and a half to get from our house to the restaurant. And it was like, I don't want to be here. Next day it was back to five minutes. Ever seen so many stumbling green people? No, I.
Stumbling green people? I even wore green today.
I didn't even wear green that day. I was like, man, I was so tired of St. Patrick's Day, I might even go to the other. There was this guy, I mean, he looked like an overgrown Leprong. I mean, he had the orange beard, the little mustache, had the little green hat on, green shirt on, but he was probably like six split four. Like going, okay, get from that off of the height. And he skipped across the crosswalks, each ever crosswalk. Skip across the crosswalks. Somebody run over him, please just run over him.
I wonder how many, uh, people get arrested during spring break.
There was a shirt about that. Lots of shirts about being arrested on spring break.
Make a motion to approve in those. Is it?
Yep, here's a couple more.
I'm sure it's a daughter break now.
Shit, we both come back with cold, I don't know if it was, if the water was freezing even.
Okay, general, general government.
You got a general government?
Here we go, and, uh, jet responders, nobody assigned.
We don't, uh, you don't have to sign that, but we have to put it through the meeting. Lot of those back down the news. Don't sign that.
Not the trash.
No, it's jet responders, and we just have to put it through the meeting.
Let you guys.
There's a conference law.
On favor?
Yeah, that's their part. I'm sorry, who did what?
I'm in motion, Chad, second.
Thank you.
All over the night.
Thanks. Yeah, wasn't my minute or less.
No.
Oh, thank you.
You're too loud.
Thought forgot my tool was somewhere. I'm not be here part of the day Friday. They're having two county clerks retirements, but one's on one side of Oklahoma and the other's on the other side of Oklahoma.
Who got that?
I haven't decided which one I'm going to. I need to go to both of them, cause both of them have helped me extremely. But one's at Hughes County and one's at Texas County, so.
I would go to Texas County.
You would go to Texas.
I go to Hughes County. Might see a jackal powder.
Can you just get approval?
Private.
Second, all favor? Monthly office.
There's no office of service.
Product property easement, North West, North East Corner, Section nine, twenty seven nine, innocent deed show up. Okay, I'll get you a minute.
I gotta call this morning.
Okay, I'll just give it to them.
What happened? I'm sorry, what?
Well, it was for, it was gonna, with my employees, it was a big shale on their lawn, and we couldn't do it.
So not going to?
Not gonna do it.
How do we put that down?
Uh, just no, I guess no action.
No action?
Yeah. Okay, open bids for one more pick. First from Croft, from Cherokee. Okay. Two fifteen Chevrolet Silverado, three thousand five hundred.
What was it again, sir?
Two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Silverado, uh, three thousand five hundred.
Thirty five hundred.
Our total cost, three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and six dollars. Norfolk, green. Tis fifteen. True calf, before Butler's bike bed. Thirty four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Three four, eight eight eight?
Yep.
Has a Butler's bike bed on?
Yeah, we use those to get tires or something.
There's a Butler's bike bed too.
No, no emergency.
Portion one. Arse bags. I have to make a motion to table, sign the review.
Second, all favor?
So you want that on next week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Open bids for doors and windows, installation for sheriff's office and DA's office.
Nobody else?
No bids.
So somebody needs to carefully explain that to them, that they need to call and get three phone quotes. And they have to have proof of the phone quotes, so. And then the phone quotes need to be attached to the bit, uh, to the PO. So if they want me to do that, that's fine, but.
Can I go to go out of bids for medical services for jail?
No, 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 no.
Office of General?
Oh, did I not put that one on the, on the thing? No, that leaves next week, I'm sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I guess Rick's talked to you about all this stuff.
I have no specs. They told me that you guys would, something would happen.
We'll take care of that.
Today.
They got, he was supposed to, the guy met with Rick and I, he's supposed to be, he's supposed to leave some stuff. I never seen anything, so.
I don't know.
Okay.
It's on my desk.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
This is what they gave me as specs. I have not retyped them. I just wanted to make sure that you guys, I don't see any brand names or anything on it. But I'll retype them and get them sent out. I mean, I don't know flooring well enough to know if that's all they need on there or not.
No idea, very. I make a motion for bids for flooring.
Second.
All in favor? Can I go to bids for equipment installation, train for moving ironware, equipment to Alphatac County?
The idea there is, instead of moving the actual radios and that whole tower and all them antennas. We'll put a couple of small antennas up here on top of the courthouse and a couple on that tower over there. And just move them radio consoles from the first batch almost there.
What's the Zetron reseller factory?
Well.
What's Zetron?
That Zetron is the brand of that equipment down there.
Okay, oh, of that equipment.
Disassemble that and move it and hook it back up. It's gotta be somebody that knows that equipment and is trained.
This is, it's a brand, it's a social brand.
We don't want just anybody coming in there and messing with that stuff, so.
I'm moving the approval, second.
All favor?
When will that?
Um, April, close them on April tenth, unless you don't think that that's, yeah, three weeks, unless you don't think that's long enough.
That's my thing, two weeks be long.
No, can't do it, two weeks anymore. Nope, even though that's five long, but correct number of days, they say no, so we're leaving them out for three weeks.
Go on bids for outdoor lighting for the fairgrounds.
And he told me you would have two more vendors. Yeah, it's to the county, for Alphatac County.
Fairgrounds?
Oh. Sorry. I just copied the previous one, you tell.
Couldn't build on Southern one?
Yeah, well.
I suggested Southern ones, Southern ones, so.
Yeah, Southern, Casey Electric.
Casey Electric.
Looking to all the electricity too. Most of them want, I know, I know.
Who you got, who you got down?
Casey Electric is the only one that they gave me that you guys had.
What about your Archer?
Archer from there?
Archer would be great.
Is this all right? This is their specs, right there. I mean, I don't know enough about lighting and stuff to know that's enough.
This is your Archer, Southern and Casey Electric.
I'm sorry, Archer?
Southern and Casey Electric.
Sunderland, Casey, okay.
Shows her all the holes being. Yeah, that covers everything.
Guys, I say, I don't, I just don't know enough about that stuff to know whether that's enough or not, so why don't you guys fill up that?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Do you have the original?
Attention service agreement in Creek County, Geelong Justice Center. Tens of service agreement between Creek County and G- G- Justice Center.
Summer didn't last too long, did it? It's gonna be in the seventies today. A little freeze, a little frosty when I got up. I couldn't even see that light.
Yeah, I got to the morning of the judgment, and it was like somebody turned the lights on. Turned it on.
And all the way up here.
Hundred, hundred feet in front of you, you can see it.
And then way up here is pretty foggy, and I'll get a, head of this house, and it cleared up. Remove the approval, second.
All in favor?
Do you have your district ones? I just have the district twos, here's district twos.
Can we all, we can do a one resolution here? I move the approval, second.
Everything?
Yeah, everything. Doug can't read that much, he coughs.
Do you guys want copies of these, and look at them, all three of you?
Yes.
Or you want to just look at them afterwards? I don't care what you wanna do.
Either be fine with me, just depends, we didn't have our specs, it's hard to.
You want to gather two?
That must be LW.
Yeah. I was gonna say, is that the state honor inspector now?
Yes, it was.
Huh, yeah?
Probably better. You know, all these are.
We are on sold.
Yeah, sold and CD auction.
So, we are, are, we're making seven thousand dollars a thing.
District, district there.
Just one district, and how would you add to yours?
Or thirteen, fourteen thousand?
I feel Doug's pickup about thirty-five hundred, we drug it out of the weeds.
The little black one?
Yeah, the old black one, they ain't ran in two years. I was noticing that the dogs pick up about that much.
The New Holland, you're at about thirty-seven thousand dollars on the surprise, because.
Thirty-seven thousand?
Yeah. It ran. It worked, it's just, New Holland should stick with farm equipment, not construction equipment.
I agree with you.
Sold the truck for that, but it didn't even run.
It's set in the weeds over by Coop's old scale house. Didn't have a tailgate, couldn't keep it in the road, it's a ninety model.
That's the truck that Paul agrees, said to get cheese and corn, is what, years, year ago.
I actually do that. It brought thirty-five hundred. I've heard five hundred. It's more or less to get it out of the yard, those trucks will pick up. No, that's a pickup.
This is my truck, it was, only got more. Didn't go very much when I traded it in, 'cause it had a rec title, but it ran great. So I got like twenty-eight hundred for it.
Yeah, contract was it.
It's a ninety, or, I don't know, a two thousand six Chevy Silverado, single cab.
Well, that's way newer. That'd been a ten thousand dollar truck down there. You could have sold it down there. This is a nineteen ninety.
But because it had a rec title, it didn't go.
Did you even born in nineteen ninety?
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah.
Well, see, I knew it was close.
It's how old this is. It's easy to keep, check how old I am. Nineteen ninety.
Just to be a good year or something?
Yes, best year.
Well, I knew you was in there close, but I didn't know.
Any unforeseen business?
I mean, I was only in junior high in ninety.
I was like four years old at high school, and then.
I ain't gonna tell you.
I was a freshman in college.
All these old people. I ain't gonna tell you what I was doing in nineteen ninety.
He doesn't remember nineteen ninety, say a little word.
Probably, it's something with the county jail. What year was that?
Was time.
Ninety-one, I think I was in county jail. See? Close in.
He celebrated your first birthday, isn't he?
All in favor?
Aye.
A bunch of youth kids that are like, born like.